All right.
I'm about to be in a lift, so I'm gonna stay off the camera, but this is our regular meeting Thursday, October twenty twenty eighth, six P. M. Hybrid private meeting. And we will do a quick roll call. Rebecca, you said is not in, right?
Correct.
Great. So we have Steve Kirsch.
Here.
Greg Beno.
Here.
Mary Hall.
Here.
Catherine Stoffer.
Here.
And myself, Michael Manjus. We have Ron Bonavsky.
I'm here.
Heidi Mead.
Heidi's available down the hall, but.
Got it.
She's not there now. Yeah.
All right. Ken Kellogg.
I'm here.
Perfect.
Mike Frank Duchess.
Frank, okay, I couldn't see you. Thank Frank. Appreciate it. So I think that's everybody then.
Yep.
All right, we will go to approval of the meeting minutes and voting records, September fifteenth and thirtieth.
Steve Kirsch, I move to.
Steve, before you do that, I, this is Mary. Mike, I have a issue with the comments that I had asked to be put in, and it's not complete what I had asked for. If you go to the addition, discussion board member and I'm.
Mary, we still, we still want to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Discussion about it. So we always start with the motion and then we'll have discussion.
Steve Kirsch.
Thanks, Steve.
No problem. Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the meeting minutes and voting record for September fifteenth and September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Great. And now comments. Mary, go ahead.
Yes.
Sorry to cut you off, but I just want to get it open.
No, 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 that's okay. That's okay. So when we met the last time, I asked that there would be additional comments and Ron, I sent it to you and Mike, I sent you the email also. And the concern I have is the way that it's reading right now. And if I go to page one of three on the regular meeting, Thursday, September fifteenth, on the motion second was the motion to approve the amended meetings and vote and voting records, and it was, it was passed six to zero. The discussion was board member requested the minutes reflect additional comments from the July twenty-first meeting. Fine. Under the discussion and staffing, she wanted the minutes to reflect that board member Hall agreed with vice chairman's comments on retention. Fine. And board member Beno asked about the possibility of pursuing recruiting efforts was fine, but I had written and we voted on that, that first selectman Kellogg said that H R was handling the hiring and at this time there was no need for the for the recruiting efforts. And I think that needs to be put back in there because it leaves open the question of board member Beno asking about the possibility of pursuing recruiting efforts and it's open ended. You know, it's, it's not an answer to that. And I had written to you guys on that on Friday, September sixteenth.
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I never said we weren't going to recruit. I'm quite the opposite.
What you, what I had down saying was first selectman Kellogg said that H R was handling the hiring and at this time, there was no need to hire a recruiting company.
Oh, recruiting company.
Company, correct.
Company, right.
That is, that is accurate. Yes.
That is accurate.
Yes.
So can we, I mean, I hate to be nuanced, but I think that closes that sentence off, Mike.
I, no problem with it. We can certainly approve it with that amendment to the minute.
Okay. Send that on September sixteen.
Yeah, and I made, I, I made a copy of it so you can have it again.
Did, did it go to Diane by any chance or?
It went to you, it went to Heidi, and it went to Mike.
Okay.
And none of us probably did it with this because we all thought the other, we all thought the other one was going to do it. So that's my bad for not sending. I said, we all probably thought the other person was going to do it, so we didn't send it through to Diane. So we'll get that to Diane.
I'm pointing fingers at you and Heidi. That's all I.
That's okay.
I appreciate that.
So if we could just add that closing statement to it, okay?
I think we're all comfortable making that amendment and that's perfect.
Yeah, there's no.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other objection. Any objections? All right, hearing none will approve unanimously with the amendment of Mary Hall. Perfect. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, first selectman, you are up.
Thanks, Charlie. The only thing I want to bring up that relates to there were one item on our new business, so I can just defer until you get to that item.
Perfect. And I know the superintendent's two schools did not join us. Ron, did you send something out for everybody? I don't know if it went.
Yeah, it went to, I, I sent it to everyone via email.
Sure. Okay.
And that was just an update from Joe. If anyone has any follow-up questions, I can, you know, Joe's actually out of town until Monday, but you know, you can, you know, send them to either myself or him and I'm sure he can get it addressed.
Perfect. All right. EMS building committee.
Reports in the packet.
Right. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
Yeah, Mike, this is Steve. My only question, there, there seems to be a lag. Is that, is that?
There is, yeah.
And nothing that can be done to shorten that lag period is.
I, I mean, I don't know. I know that they, that John updates it after meetings. He works with Ron. I, I don't know.
They usually vote like prior month bills are voted on at the meeting.
Yeah.
It's another two.
Takes a while, but they got to get certified records from the, that's got to be signed up by the architect and so there is.
Okay, I, I figured there must be a reason, but I kept getting thrown because it was like July and I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
A little slower the update.
Well, I mean, it's good. We're getting updates. It's proceeding. We obviously had the special motion, the special meeting, so that's fine. I just wondered. Thank you.
Mike, I just have one other question. Mike, I just have one other question. If I look at the variance to the budget, it seems everything is still on track to make budget, even though there was some flip flops between line items. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, and the quarter, quarterly fire department report, I know was in the package as well or sent out.
Yeah, so ju- just a quick note, I think we've gotten two of this for three fire departments.
We got the last one.
So two were in the packet and then one rolled the last one.
One rolled in.
Okay, I, I apologize. I didn't realize stuff you did. Is that a last?
Perfect. All right. Public participation. I don't know if I see anybody there.
No, no public here.
No public here. I seem like I'm the only guy on the phone, so we're good. New business proposed budget transfer for two thousand and twenty-three.
So.
Can you want to jump on this yet?
Yeah, if I, if I just jump in on this, so I, you know, you, you have the proposed resolution in your packet. Let me explain it first and I actually have a modification to the proposed resolution. So one of the items that was outstanding during the budget cycle was our contracted cleaning services for town hall, the library, EMS, et cetera. That was put out to bid based upon some of the, the numbers we had had during the, you know, the process. The bids came back and even the lowest bid was more than we have budgeted. So we're comfortable that it is, you know, it's a good number relative to the market, but it is more than we have budgeted. I mean, sorry, yeah, it's more than we have budgeted. So I obviously want to, you know, we, we need to pursue this. I want to get a an agreement from them and get it before town council, but I want to make, make sure we're clear that we have funding for it. The overage is just over ten thousand dollars as you have in the resolution there. We originally identified the public works recycling line as a possible funding source because we were running fairly, fairly well in that, in that category, even though there's been some volatility. Earlier this week, I think it was Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We got a major surprise from the interlocal recycling. It's basically a coalition and the.
Can I, actually, can I step in?
Yeah.
I, I believe Chris was made aware Tuesday. I don't think the board went out. I know that it was either simultaneous with the board packet going out.
Yeah, Chris.
Or we found out.
Chris told me last, yeah, yeah, Chris told me yesterday. Well, I think by the time he had a ti- chance to, you know, go through and digest all the reports that the so the quarterly, they update this basically quarterly and that the next quarter is up, you know, we know there's volatility. It is up dramatically. It's up over eighty percent. So we are currently, because of that, you know, flowing that out for the rest of the year puts this line, you know, not one we want to tap into because at that rate, we'd probably have some issues with the recycling line as it is. Nothing dramatic at this point. We'll keep watching it. It could, these things change so frequently, it could drop just as fast as it went up. So we're not yeah, I'm not alarmed for the end of the year, but it's not a, a line item that I would want to tap into.
Tap into. Okay.
So.
So where do you want to take it from?
So Ron and I discussed it further and I think the H R insurance line, which as we discussed at a prior meeting, has room in it because of the successful H R, you know, our, our medical insurance being put back out to market and through net of healthcare, we have savings in that line that are essentially locked in. So I know we tapped it a little bit for some, from other, for other things at a prior meeting. There should be absolutely no issue with additional ten thousand in that line and we won't, you know, we won't have the risk of not having enough in rec- recycling at this point. So the revision would be the, in the from column to change it to H R insurance and I know Ron has the proper account number.
Perfect.
So that's, that's the update.
Perfect. All right, Steve, you want to make a motion for us?
Yes, I'm just giving the new account.
Of course. They're going to throw you off. You were all prepared.
Yeah, threw me off a little. I move to approve the budget transfer of ten thousand, three hundred dollars from the H R insurance account, number one, zero, zero, one, dash, one, zero, dash, one, five, one, zero, one, dash, zero, one, one, zero, dash, one, five, zero, six, three, zero to the town hall maintenance contracted services account and that the full text of the resolution be included in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mike, this is Mary. So if I look, Ron, on page four of the year-to-date budget report, this is coming from the H R insurance account and I was just making sure I had the right line item as Steve was reciting it. There is a an amount in there that's requisitioned of, of a million one, bringing the percentage used to sixty-seven point one does so that, and I know it's only ten thousand dollars, but my question is, is the one point one million requisition to what we expect the insurance.
Year, no, I, I think we have that encumbered through the.
Summer, through insurance.
Through, yeah, so.
Half a year.
So we are, you know, I did the analysis. I don't have it. I know I did it for the prior meeting. No, the vig was, I want to say like one eighty. That's not right.
So that sixty-seven percent would go up to what the, to, to, once it's all in and.
All in, you're probably looking at about, our savings was we had budgeted. So, oh gosh. We had budgeted, I want to say six percent, six percent increase. We came in flat.
No, negative.
Negative one.
It went down?
So we should be at about ninety-four, ninety-five percent.
So it covers it. Okay. I just was curious whether that one point one was taking it to the fullest, but it's not.
And what you, you see on the insurance line, we can only, I can only cover up to six months because we have employees with holdings, every payroll catching up with that, which reduces that down. So I can increase that as bills come in.
If we encumber the whole amount, it would actually look negative for that.
Right, right, because, because what's our that asks a question, what's the employee contribution compared to the town contribution to the insurance?
Varies by collective bargaining.
More sixty, forty, seventy, thirty average?
Always one. Yes.
Think they're like twenty percent, twenty-two percent.
Eighty and twenty or less. Or less, yeah.
So is the burden more on the town or more? Okay, thanks. Okay, good. That was my discussion.
Perfect. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Anybody opposed? None? We pass unanimously. All right, review of two thousand and twenty-three financial reports. General fund budget through October twenty-eighteenth. Anybody have any questions or concerns on those?
Um, the only question, and, and again, this is Mary Hall, as I went through it each, each department, okay? If I just look at what was year-to-date expended, you're roughly around in that twenty-five percent range of the total budget. My question though is why are some of the, some of the town functions in.
Why are some encumbered in that?
Up to one hundred percent.
So utilities will typically encumber the entire year.
Correct.
The, you know, if, if there's other known amounts or the purchase orders are in.
Yeah.
You know, contract sign will encumber it at that time.
So is there any concern that, and they're encumbered up to the full amount of what was approved in the budget? So is there any concern at this point? I know it's only three months into the year that we're going to be over that or under that? Any concern? And I know it's early, but do you have any thought for that?
Right now, I would say no, but we'll have a better idea as we get to the latter part of it.
Okay.
Everyone knows that, you know, he, you know, and we've got it, we've got the contingency in the budget from last year for fuels, heating fuels and, and diesel and gasoline for the trucks, so. Yeah.
And you'll see public works encumbers a lot, a hundred percent.
I know, I saw.
They have to be ready to purchase or repair trucks, especially during snowstorms or paving or anything like that. So they have to have a P O on place so they can get financing right away.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would, I would say that's probably our biggest concern.
As we, as the winter goes through.
The winter, the winter is the thing. The winter is always the big on.
Okay.
Big variable.
That's all I have for on my end, Mike.
All right, on the public schools fund statement, Ron, anything to call out there?
Yeah, let me just. Yeah, so. No, no points of concern at this point on, on the, on the school budget at all. The, and again, we do encumber salaries for that. We don't do it in the town side. Concerns, you know, there, the, the heating of the buildings in the winter are probably in the fueling up of the sploshes. You know, and again, we've got money in the, in overall contingency for those two.
So the only other question I have was in account number seven, five, five, six, one, oh. Tuition public within, there's a, there's a charge of the five forty-six which puts the percent used at four hundred percent. What is that?
Yeah, what, what page you on, Mary?
I'm on page two on the, page two of the Board of Education budget.
Yeah.
And it's at the bottom third of the page.
Yeah, tuition public.
Yeah, so it's where it's.
Seven, five, five, six, ten.
Yep.
Where it's over seven oh five. Is that what you're?
Correct.
Okay, so the. So right, right now, we, there's an offset in that for excess costs for special education. It's a grant that offsets some of the expenditures that hasn't been booked at all. It's to the two to six hundred thousand dollars.
But, but so is, so is that grant on another
It's.
Line item somewhere else?
No, it's, it's, it's netted in that. I would have to get you more detail on that line.
It's, it's a state funding and when you get the state.
Yeah, so, so it's, that's a, that's an offset grant for special education expenditures, which gets netted against those expenditures. So it's part of that, the object code on the far left there. It's, it's a separate account within that. I could certainly get you more detail on that.
Is the grant that's coming in going to be enough to cover that?
It, it never covers the expenditure overall, but it offsets part of it.
So is the seven oh five at risk for how much possibly with the grant?
Is it, it may, that account may go over, but the, the grant itself is budgeted at like five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so, so there's a potential of a couple hundred thousand of that being over. And that's for that tuition public
Yes.
within the state. And, and what exactly is that?
Those are, those are out of place.
Out of place. Okay, okay.
And you may, and, and that's why, as you guys know, you have the, the money put aside just in case we need it. Someone could move into district tomorrow that needs to get out first.
And there's no, and there's no, uh, fee, uh, possibility that the state would pull that grant back? That's in concrete?
I, as, as.
I remember what state you're in.
Yeah.
No, I, I know that, but it's seven hundred thousand dollars.
So the, the excess plus, they actually, you know, it's, it's, they cover seventy percent of the, I mean, there's no guarantees.
I, okay.
Alls we could do is.
So we just watch.
On historical, you know, it's been losing system historically.
We do get the funds. We really, I, I think the fair statement, yes, from year to year, from time to time, there, there's a variance. But the other thing I keep in mind is that there's other offsets. So tuition private may may under run and then we've got the whole thing backstopped with, with the fund that we've set up.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
And then one, tuition private may overrun and tuition public may under.
May under, yeah.
So.
I do look at this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, and, and actually.
Sorry, guys.
The superintendent actually made mention, or, or Ron made mention of it at the Board of Education meeting on Monday. This was one of the items.
Okay. I'm sure Joe's on top of this watching this, as it comes in. Okay, thanks. That was the only other question I had or discussion point I had.
Perfect. The quarterly trial balance report?
So if I could make just one quick comment on that, on page five.
Yep.
About two thirds of the way down, see undesignedated, assigned fund balance. And that figure varies a little bit from the number I gave you a couple of meetings back. Believe the number I gave you. Seventeen million?
Yes.
That's twenty million and the three million dollar difference was assigned fund balance that just, that, that got rolled. That was assigned for the prior year budget that was rolled that I didn't account for when I gave you that number.
So we have twenty million?
We did.
Which is more than the percentage of revenue that was way over, right? By about like four or five million?
I don't, I don't think that much. I, I think the upper end would have been the seventeen.
The seventeen would have been putting it because of a nine, ninety-six million dollar of ninety-six million. And what is it again? Mike, I, I.
The target's sixteen point one.
Sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen point one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it would be.
Very healthy.
It would be very healthy. Okay. So Mike, when do we talk about, when do we talk about what to do with the extra? As we get into the year?
No, there's nothing we're going to do with, you're not going to spend the fund balance during the year. You're going to get into that during budget.
That's, yeah. As we get, as we get more into the year and set up for next year, what we could possibly do with it, correct?
Well, during the budget, when we start working on the budget for next year.
Right, which happens.
Capital.
Which happens after the first of the year. Okay.
Well, it's already, it's already started, so to speak, but I mean, yeah, I mean, the my budget's given to town council on first of February. So that's when that's when it's well underway.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Let me clear a text collect.
So this is Ken. Deb had a family emergency that came up a short while ago. And I assured her I would give her report for her. So the, the, we got her reports here in the packet. She's very comfortable where we are at. We're just over fifty percent to collectible, almost fifty-one percent, which is very close to where we were a year ago. So everything is trending well. The other thing she wanted to point out is the last meeting she had raised just a, a point of note of some chat of just anomaly of more checks being returned for insufficient funds than she had seen in the past. She said that has completely resolved itself and is no longer an anomaly.
Was that because of the M and T's changeover?
I, she did not tell me why. She just said that there haven't been any more issues and everything's been resolved. She didn't have any concerns. Yeah, so.
I know I should know this. This is Mary Hall again. I, I know I should know this, but who is our principal bank?
Newtown Savings.
Newtown Savings, thank you. And that, that, do we have any others? Do we have any bank account with any others?
We have that. I mean, most of those were consolidated when Patrick was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have that one small? Well, if we do, it's a very small.
N S B, N S B is on the trial balance. I didn't see anything else.
So, so the only other cash accounts is just.
And, and that short term investment fund account with the state. And that's handled. Yeah. Newtown, we get a strip rate.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a separate stiff, which is.
Perfect. All right, treasure it.
Um. We just heard about stiff. We continue to benefit from the improvement in the stiff rate as of this morning. The stiff rate was three point one, one percent. January, as a historical point, January one, it was point one percent. And in the start of this fiscal year, it was one point four nine percent. So we've seen a tremendous increase, which will have a very positive positive impact in terms of we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars in terms of interest rate. We have exceeded that for the year already. So we, we will have a very, very positive outlook in terms of our investment income. Last meeting, we talked about taking two accounts that we have at Newtown Savings Bank, the two Lily and Wilton accounts, and taking them where we were just getting a money market rate of point three percent. We moved it through Ken, through town council. That has now moved through, was posted as of today with Newtown Savings Bank. So the first fifty thousand dollars in those two accounts will continue to get the point three percent, which is the money market rate. The rest will be swept over like we do with our general fund. And that will receive whatever the stiff rate is, which right now is at three point one, one percent, which will generate using that number, an additional twenty-five thousand dollars of interest income for us on those two accounts annually. So, so that's a real positive. Just another thing, met with our Jenny Montgomery Scott advisor as we talked about. We don't have a lot of money with them right now. We've got about a billion dollars left with them. It was a good meeting. They're a good source. They, they provide regular updates like what's happening with the Fed fund rates, what's going on. So they're good. And as you would expect, they would like to get a bigger share of our, our business. But as I told our representative, at this point in time, with a rising interest rate investment, I do not see us making any changes near term. If we look at what the Fed's doing, it's probably going to continue to increase rates at least through the end of the year. Original conversation was through two thousand and twenty-three. With a looming recession, maybe they'll rethink that in two thousand and twenty-three. But until we kind of see where those rates peak and take advantage of it, what we're seeing with the stiff rates, I don't see us making any change, maybe do a revaluation in sometime in two thousand and twenty-three, once we see what happens with the Fed and what happens with the interest rates.
Do we have any more of those CDs that we were rolling and lettering and?
I don't believe so.
Those.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Alright, terrific, appreciate it.
Um, I have one, maybe, Mike. Mike, before we go on to the, the, the three year budget model, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think this is probably a good time to ask. When are we going to do things like bonding for roads and, and other things that we were moving the budget?
So, we, yeah, we were talking about that. Along the, about getting that, um, getting the next bonding authorization process started. So going through the, going through the ones that are on the list and seeing what's right, because of.
Do you have an idea when you might be bringing that forward? You're talking about a month, two months?
I, between now and the end of the year, for sure.
Between now and the end of the year.
That's my, okay, sense, yeah.
Fair enough.
Sounds like you're one to two months.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't believe it's two months to the end of the year.
Minimally starting, yeah, I mean, we'll see where, yeah.
Right, exactly. I love it. Alright, good.
Thank you.
Alright, last thing. Um, I did have one more question for the treasurer, if I just got a second, just, uh, do we have any? Like, uh, wild ass guess of where we think we might end up? Thank you.
Our, 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 our budget was two hundred thousand dollars, um, right now, we're at three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. So we substantially passed that. And Ron and I were talking about this earlier, and if you look at it, you get that big influx of funds in June and in January. So that interest that we're seeing right now monthly is very high. It will go down again, you know, make its way down to January, then it will spike up again. What I can say is, and Ron and I went back and forth, five, six hundred thousand versus two hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's a safe number, I think. I think it'll probably be a little higher.
It could very well. Right, so it'll, it'll give us some coverage on some surprises we may have, because I think with all the inflation that's through the market and what Ken's already seeing and some of these contracts that come up. I think we're going to see some other surprises pop up, uh, through the course of the year where, you know, we may have under budgeted because of the. Historical data was great, but the world we're living in today is very much not that, so, uh, that'll be nice to have that cushion, which is what I'm. Exactly what I was hoping it was going to say, so that's perfect, thank you.
Just keep, just keep wishing for warm weather.
Exactly, exactly. We don't need, we don't need to run up the oil bill, yeah.
So, uh, this is Mary again. So Frank, if, if I look at the. Investment interest, and I should have picked up on this because it was one sixty one, that's the three twenty three we're talking about versus the two hundred.
Yes.
And you think it's going to go probably closer to five?
Five, five, probably a conservative estimate, you know, again, unless things fall off the cliff, you know, but, uh. Right now, based on where the numbers are.
I mean, could, look at the world we've lived in over the last five to seven years, you know, the Fed's, uh, you know. Raising rates right now, it looks like they're going to do that through the end of the year, but if the, if, 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 if inflation tempers and. And the economy falls off a cliff, can I see them pulling rates back too? I mean, never say never, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's possible, and anything's possible, and then that could impact, that could impact it on the downside.
I just think we got at least another six months like this, so.
Yeah.
Rack up some numbers, and, and we have a big balance right now too, which helps us, so.
We do, yeah.
Yeah.
Mike, 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 uh, I'm sorry, um, I forgot to ask one other discussion point, okay? And I know I've, uh, asked this before, how many open positions, Ken, do we have that are not filled today?
Uh, again, I mean, HR keeps the details. I think it's prob, we probably have about a dozen permanent. I mean, there's always seasonal stuff fluctuations, probably about a dozen across the whole enterprise in terms of permanent positions, but. It's a mix. I mean, there's admin positions, ones at WMNR, I mean.
So where all those positions can post it on the HR website, because I looked at it last week and I looked at it again this afternoon. There, and there's only three open positions.
Them are, a lot of them are well, well in the recruiting process and we're, but we don't keep them up there. I mean.
Okay.
You put something out there now, and in a week you have a thousand resumes. I mean, obviously exaggerated, but, um, so we don't. Necessarily depending upon the position and how things are coming in, we don't always keep it up forever. We may keep it up for a week or two and then take it down. Because there's so many applicants, um, it varies, it varies considerably.
Okay.
There's others that we've only gotten one or two, right, or, you know, because they're very technical or require specific licensures and that. And, um, those, you know. It, it all depends on where they are in the, in those cycle.
So it's about a dozen?
I would, I would say it's probably a safe.
Which is, which is pretty close.
I would say half of them are the first, probably around half of them being full time with, you know, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of the open positions right now are part time positions too, so.
Right, because if I looked at the HR open today, there was three, and if I look at the staff directory. There are six to be determined, so that's like nine positions that are not, that are, there's not a name associated with it.
I have, I had to go, you know, by each one.
What's the concern, Mary?
I doubt very much the WMNR control board panel operators on the website as an open position.
No, my concern, my concern, Mike, is that we set a budget for X amount of dollars to be spent on salaries. And if we're under, if we're going to be under our salaries, and we talked about this at a couple of meetings ago in September. Uh, should we be hiring maybe people at a higher salary because we have the money? Okay, to bring those people on board to help with, with a lot of the administration and some of the work that needs to be done in, in the town.
Again, that really doesn't fall to us, to be honest with you. No, I know, but it's not our role. Our job isn't to run the town. Our job is to work, so.
I mean.
Ken's job is to operate on a daily basis.
But, but I.
Certain relative to very specific positions, which I, I asked for exactly that, because we needed to offer more to be at market. And that was approved and we are utilizing that. I mean, we've got some good success. We've got. Um, we've got a lot, we've got some leads for our health positions that are open. Our billing department is now fully staffed. Um, so we're, you know, we're, we're making headway there. Um, a lot of the. You know, some of the open positions are, you know, it's, it's not a, I, I think they're at the right market rate. I mean, with it. I mean, our current range and budget and things like that. Now, that said, I mean, there's always fluctuations year to year. Due to open positions, you know, right now we have a lot of retirements, so. You know, yes, you may have savings for an open position, but you also have the expense of vacation payouts, so it's not always a very simple. Calculus, right, so.
Well, yeah, and someone's last day of work is October second, but they're, they're active until December thirty first.
Because they have vacations, they have unpaid vacation.
Right, and some will want to take it as a payout, which allows us to recruit. Others want to just. Take vacation for a period of time, right, so, you know, it's, it's.
There's some inefficiencies, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Alright, Ron, anything to update us on the three year model?
I, I have not, uh, had a chance to work on it since the last meeting, Mike.
Fair enough.
Mike, this is Mary again. We were going to get together sometime in the fall to discuss it. Is that what we're?
I, I think I was going to do a little more work from my end also, and I think the idea.
Yeah, we were just waiting for Ron to get it.
The budget got rolling, right, was to.
So what do we think, after Thanksgiving? I can't believe Thanksgiving's almost a month away, you know?
Um, I, I think early December.
Early, okay. And then we would do, we said we would do a special workshop for that or a special meeting for that.
I was just, I believe that's what we, uh.
Yes. We talked about that and we talked about one for roads.
About the road meeting, right, exactly.
I look forward to that. Anything we can do to, anything we can do to help resist, I'd be more than glad to.
So, Mike, I've got one item before the end. Um, we had said we would put roads on the agenda. Um, so that we didn't forget about it and, uh, it, it.
And I forgot to put it on the agenda, is that what you're reminding me?
And we forgot to put it on the agenda, yeah, and, um. And so I, I already asked about, about bonding.
We will add it for next month, and I think, I mean, I'm hoping we get it, you know, we should get a, uh. We should try to tie it up a date sooner than later too, just to get it on the calendar.
Yes, I'd like to do that, and the other thing is, I just wanted to make mention that the council approved. Um, the contract for, uh, VHB to, to do the road study, um. Uh, so that is going to be undertaken, um, you know, in, in the near future, um, so that's.
Do we have any kind of a, uh, ETA on the deliverable? Doesn't make a lot of sense to have a big meeting before we have that delivered.
Yeah, no, that's probably, I mean, uh, I, I'd have to, oh my gosh. I, I think it's like a sixty to ninety day.
Yeah, I, I think it was going to lead into.
Well, by the time they actually, yeah, yeah, but.
It's going to be hard for us to do much, right?
Yeah, their schedule was twelve weeks, um, from receipt of contract to completion. They, it, it detailed four tasks, um, and, and, and so there's some time periods.
Sounds like the middle of January, right?
Yeah, yeah, by the time we. Get final. Everything, yep.
So ju- just quick, so after, uh, review of financial reports, I'll add an agenda item, review of roads, that work?
Sure.
So keep it a.
Okay.
Keep it on, keep it on our, uh, but, uh.
Pepper Street's looking good. It is.
Well, Pepper Street itself, if you've been, if you've been by the, if you've been by the intersection today, it's dangerous.
Well, the intersection, yes, but if you.
But I've, I've spoken to the first eleven.
Better, much improved.
Oh, yeah, pavement, and they're finally cutting down.
December, Ken?
What's that?
Is it done December?
No, well, there's, I will, I mean.
He didn't say week, December.
The project is gonna, I mean, there's a lot of other little things that have to be done, everything. We're trying to get, you know, the vast majority done before the. Before the construction season's over, so we're looking, it's looking like it's in good shape, but we're, you know.
The good news is, one month after they had the closure over, over by the bypass, they finally cut down the hill to the final grade today. They're finishing up that, and if they wouldn't have had a big truck blocking the road, it would have been really nice. I'll take it.
Alright, I want to make a motion.
You first, motion to adjourn?
I second Mary Hall.
Thank you all. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Bye, Mike.